For live. Everybody. This stands for the budget.
Of the United States of America. The Republic of which is famous. One nation under oath. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allow John Leclerc to expend from the Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund for the purpose of emergency repairs at RMS preschool exit. And to waive the fifteen thousand dollar three bid threshold.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second, the motion.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Daisy. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Both? None? Okay. Uh, thank you, Kim. Uh, any other changes? Hearing none? Uh, let's move on to the live district calendar.
All right, so um, one of the things I did want to mention, um, that's not on here, it will be on here. Tomorrow, um, we are going to be having a state of the district um, event next uh, Thursday, the the, or sorry, yes, Thursday, the seventeenth. Um, we will be sending out an email about that, uh, probably what tomorrow, Ruben?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna do it tonight. Yeah.
So we'll send out the email about that, add it to the calendar. Um, that'll be out there, that'll be in this room at a uh, was it six o'clock?
Six o'clock, I believe, yeah.
Just confirm that for everybody.
Believe.
Yep, six o'clock in this room, the library uh, classroom at the high school, we'll also broadcast that out via Zoom. Again, the purpose of that is so that Ruben can uh, deliver a state of the district, let people know about things that are going on in the schools. Uh, we'll have other administrators, uh, principals and so on there to help answer questions. Um, so it'd be a live interactive event, um, allowing people to learn more and to ask those questions. Uh, tomorrow, obviously, we don't have school due to voting. Um, parent teacher conferences at all schools, uh, will be taking place, um. Let's see what else we have, uh, no school on Friday. Um, we have a fall sports banquet at the high school on Wednesday. Trying to think what else, child side screening, um, that'll be on Wednesday at RMS.
Great, and um, PTSA meeting?
What was up?
The PTSA meeting on the fourteenth and the yep, college admissions panel on the fifteenth.
That college admissions panel will also be in this room, um, that'll be at uh, five thirty. I'm getting clarification as to whether or not they want me to just record it, or if they want me to also livestream it, but I will at least be here to record that at a minimum. They're gonna have uh, various college uh, missing admissions folks here to answer questions, um, and then also talking about one to four grading and kind of how that translates, you know, from high school to college. Uh, they've said that they're gonna answer a lot of the frequently um, asked questions that they've received about the grading system and things like that, so that'll be the intention of that event.
Okay, great. And then uh, we're on to our next school board meeting the following week and then Thanksgiving. Does anybody have any questions or additions or anything else related to this? And if not, uh, thank you. It's great to have these things. Put up on our calendar and keeping us aware. All right, um. So, public comments.
Yeah, so that's back to me again, and I didn't introduce myself, Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator, School Board Secretary, um, you can hear me but obviously not see me. Um, on the screen right now for everybody to see is the public comments policy or the participation policy rather. Um, obviously, before you make a comment, make sure you're familiar with that policy. Um, if you are to make a public comment, um, make sure that you use your first name, your last name and your town of residence uh, before you uh, make that. And then if you are remote in order to make a public comment, you can just push the hand raise uh, button, should be located at the bottom of your screen. I can acknowledge you from there and make sure that you can be heard.
All right, thank you, Nick. So.
We don't have a lot of people on tonight, um, and most people, I think, are familiar with the process, so I think at this point, uh, we don't have any public comments that I've seen. Um, just let everybody know, we do have a second session at the end of the meeting.
Right, okay, great, thanks Nick. Okay, so you know, probably there being no public comments, let's move on to the student representatives.
So, last Friday, the seniors had a day called I'm College Bound where they came in here and they got help writing their college essays and applying to colleges. I know a lot of them were in here working with our counselors and stuff to get help with that. Um, Harvest Fest, which we talked about at the last meeting, was a couple of weeks ago, and I know, I think it was the twenty first, yeah. It, um, there was a lot of people there, they all enjoyed it, it went pretty good. Senior class hosted a dance last Friday, and a lot of people went, it was, again, pretty well hosted, lots of people had fun. The girls cross country was third at their state meet and tenth at the meet of champions on Sunday. Or Saturday, one of the days.
For them.
Who was the dance hosted for?
Um, the senior class hosted it, but it was open to everyone.
Don't you have any idea how many came?
Hmm, no, a lot.
It looked pretty, they did a really good job decorating for it.
Yeah, it was approximately about two hundred.
Okay.
Yep, which is the largest one surviving here.
Yep.
And it was very tastefully decorated.
Very, very neat.
The Pratt actually didn't look like the Pratt.
It looked great.
So. So. And if I can just add, since I'm gonna be, I mean, I just took a couple of my things, so. Um, is uh, my understanding, because I wasn't there the entire time, I was there for the first half hour or so, just to kind of see how things were and so forth. Um, was that it was just a very um classy event where people were um, having fun and behaved themselves, and it was just a good culture in that, in that space. People, you know, we had some homeschoolers go, we had some people from other schools, you know, they all went through a process to be able to come and everything like that, so it was nice. People were respectful.
And I hear the music was awesome.
They were dancing till they were tired, too.
Yeah.
You know, if they use the music system that Heather was able to get?
I don't believe they did, but I think that they got songs approved because some of the songs that they wanted to use that um program didn't have most of the songs, so they didn't have a whole lot of stuff to work with.
Yeah, yeah, but the speakers sounded good in there that we had mounted a couple of years ago, yeah.
And uh, Emre, can you tell us anymore about the college application there? What, what was, do you know what that was about or how it worked?
Um, basically, they had, the seniors were able to come in to this classroom area and they had, I'm pretty sure they had representatives from college and they had a couple of our school counselors and some other people in here working to help them apply to different colleges and work on improving their essays to help with their acceptance.
Great, okay, was it well attended, do you know?
I did see quite a few people in here.
Great, thank you. And uh, I know there was also a financial aid night for seniors that was, I guess, related to the same thing, trying to look at how to afford college, is that the idea?
Mm-hmm, yep, sure, I'll, I'll just zip right in, does anyone have any questions for Emre? Okay.
Well, Emre, thank you very much for your report, man.
Yes, so I'll just zip right in, um. Yeah, I was there for a portion of the financial aid night, this place was pretty full, um, we had some individuals from oh goodness, I don't know all the col-, UNH, I think, was here, but um, there was a uh, pretty much a primary speaker, but all the counselors and so forth were here to uh, talk about financial aid and applying to schools and so forth, uh, you know, going right into you have uh, people out in the audience wouldn't be able to see it, but it's right up on our wall right over here, I am college bound, pictures of all the individuals who were there and then applied to colleges. So, um, now, this doesn't mean all of the colleges that people applied to so far, and there were people who applied to college that may not have been part of this and so forth, but for this day, these are, I believe, these are New Hampshire schools that we're talking about, or maybe, or they're in a network, maybe there's a, a network of um, schools that accept this type of um uh, you know, this application and this application process. And so, we had twenty-nine individuals, I believe, or there could be thirty. Um, and I was informed, I think, about two, uh, the average of two per, so fifty-eight colleges were applied to, um, which uh, is kind of, which is neat, yeah, and I was not able to be here during that timeframe to see any of it, so, um, but I heard it was busy and you indicated that it looked pretty busy, so that's, that's good. You know, just so, a, a couple other items that wouldn't be on the calendar, but probably important for us to uh, note is that on, well, the ninth, the high school sports banquet, I think probably is on the calendar at this point in time. Um, and then the tenth is a national honor society event that's here as well, and then the um fourteenth, we've talked about, I've sent emails out about short-term committees and so forth, we have some individuals who have decided they want to be part of those, so on the fourteenth in the evening, we'll, we'll start with the elementary school short-term committee. On the uh, sixteenth for an hour, because we had to get that in this month if we possibly, it was very difficult to find a night that isn't moving right now, I'm just, we have so much going on, but was able to get a, a later session for the athletic facility short-term committee. And so, some of that will just be planning future meetings, um, state of the district we talked about is on the seventeenth. Uh, there is a college admission panel that was already talked about to discuss the one to four grading, but also um, other, other tops as well. Last time I knew, there was seven or eight colleges being represented coming that night, um, there could be more, could be one or two less, but it's, it's a pretty good um, showing, so we're excited about that. And then um, some, another piece that has to do with a lot of our uh, multi-year plan, which is focusing on shifting the entire, a, a continuous shift of the entire um organizational structure to one that is very uh, collective and is, is, is coordination and decision-making and so forth. Um, a key element of that is the inquiry team, um, where people, there are individuals from the who are already team leaders within the schools, who are gonna be forming this inquiry team that will kick off on uh, either, probably the twenty-first now, I got confirmation that that would be okay, but it's going to be typically the second Monday of the month. And what we'll be doing at those events is, uh, we'll be going through a book on PLCs and how to do them. And what that, what they are, whether or not, and also um how we can be consistent from pre-K all the way through grade twelve in our approach at our schools and at the district level, so it's a, it's a, a way of tying everything you are all the way through the system, so I'm excited about getting that started. Um. And then those who can't take part of that this year, that's fine, I have times that I'll be able to go, or I'll be able to have someone go over to meet with their teams and still go through that book with them so that they're getting the information that they need, they just may, may not be able to do all the um, data work at the district level, but they can do the same work at their local level, and that's, that's the goal, is that it's the same in their classroom, the same with their teams, the same with their vertical teams, and then the same in the district, that we're all utilizing same approach so that it is consistent for years to come. Lots of good things happening in JGS and RMS as well, uh. The JGS is starting to get the Boone Field Therapy Dogs in, uh, RMS, I think you've seen maybe some pictures on Facebook, RMS has been doing that. Uh, we had signed an MLU with them, so the Fit Therapy Dogs going in every so often, and, and the kids are able to um, experience that. We had dress-up parades, uh, both schools, I know the CHHS band played over here at JGS, it was fun, we had pictures on Facebook about that as well. Um, both, both JGS and RMS are continuing to work on their PLCs, their data walls, I would say that we're on the early stages of, of that as a whole, but that's why I talked about the inquiry team and the importance of making sure that's wrapping around at the same time. Um, they're starting some new clubs, most of them having to do with act, like, physical activity. We uh, but what both schools also this year have really put an emphasis on um community, so again, our three circles, that's just the very broad is community, collaboration and communication. And so, community, they have a community meeting, uh, both schools on a regular basis, multiple times uh, a month, where they're able to um have kids, you know, show some types of uh, you know, maybe they put on a skid, or they're able to, as a whole school, talk about uh, whole school kind of climate issues and so forth, so um like I said, we haven't done that for a while, and some of, some of these practices are a little new, uh, because we have uh, a new principal, we're at RMS and and also the two schools are trying to be in line with each other a lot more, um, since the pandemic, certainly. Um, and then they both continue to work on their MTSSB, those are the major drivers in the elementary is the MTSSB, which is the Multi-Tierred System of Support Behavior, both schools are looking very different. You know, the, year to year, you know, um, so it's, it is very interesting, they're all trying to work on that tier one or that core of how we do business as a whole. Um, how we speak, how we, what our expectations are, common, common expectations, common language, common approaches, that's what they're focusing on this year, and then, of course, also the PLC piece of utilizing data to inform instruction, and if learning hasn't happened, what are we gonna do, and if it has happened already, what are we gonna do? So I think there was a question from um someone over, it was in Ringe, they were, they had just moved here, they had asked the question when we had that night requesting to be able to utilize the one hundred twelve thousand dollars, you know, to put it into the budget. And they asked about, well, is the PLC work simply to help individuals who are in reme- need of remediation? Or is it for those who already have the understanding, and it is for everyone? Um, but the practices have to be solid so that it can benefit everyone. So those are some highlights, we got a lot going on, so it's a very, very, very busy uh, year.
Can I ask, yeah, um, this is sort of a, nice, I got a point of business. You during these um superintendent's reports often bring up s- some very interesting and very insignificant topics, is it okay that if we interrupt you?
You can interrupt me anytime you want.
If we want to know more, because you're, you, truthfully, you sometimes bring up things that I think, wow, I'd like to know more about that.
Yeah.
Trying to follow it all, all the way up to the end, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of these things, some of them have been touched at goals meetings, some of them have been touched at policy meetings, some of them have been touched at facilities meetings and so forth, and we've addressed you know, a, a variety as we, but just trying to keep up, you know, what we say is happening is happening.
Does anyone have any questions at this uh, this point?
I don't have a question, but um, I have a comment, I was picking one of my kids up today at JGS after a club. And there were so many kids coming out at four fifteen because they have been involved in various clubs. And it was so wonderful, I feel like it's been years since I've seen so many after-school clubs at the grade school level. And it was just that, you know, I'm sure Heather isn't listening, but uh, just I'm thrilled at all of that's going on for those kids after school, it's really pretty cool right now. It's busy.
It's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
All right, um. Ruben, I just wanted to ask you about the financial uh, aid uh program that's, that's coming up, is it?
I, I think it was passed.
Yes, that's right, that's right, the college admissions event.
Yes, the college, college admissions panel, yes. Yep.
So, what, what, what's, what is that like and who participated in that and what's the purpose?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, I have, I don't, I mean, the best person to ask is not here right now, um, and could give you a little. Have they? Yeah, it would be great to put it up, but I have been in conversation with um, with Ken Baker, and uh, we were taught, discussing, I know that we were trying to get like three or four colleges, she's been getting, I think Rhode, uh, Rhode Island's college is gonna be there, a main college, New Hampshire colleges are gonna be there. Uh, or individuals from there to be able to talk to parents and answer questions relative to, you know, certainly college admissions in general. But then also, we wanted to make certain that we weren't the only ones to talk to families and um, about the shift in grading practice, and so obviously, you know, it, it takes time to make that shift, and it's gonna take years to continue to do so, but we also want to be able to give uh, parents who are, have, maybe freshmen or eighth graders or, or even seniors this year, even though we do convert them into, you know, the standard one hundred point grading scale, um, and so their transcripts aren't going to look like one to four um, yet, to, to start having the conversations about that and what colleges do with all these types of scales. And the benefits of the one to four grading scale, and um, and, and if there are any, you know, negatives about it, but to hear from the, this came partly if we recall, maybe four years ago now. People very concerned about are colleges going to be able to um, accept our kids, or are kids gonna get a disadvantage if their transcripts look different from what is traditional? And so they'll address that conversation. So, um I think it'll be a, it'll be a good one to be at. Yes.
And um, I guess just as another resource kind of accompanying this, um, I'll pull this up as well on our YouTube page. So the um, middle high school's been doing a lot of efforts to try to explain this in like a tiered approach. Um, all three of these meetings were held over the summer, except for maybe that first one that might have been at the tail end of the school year. So each of these had like components of like one to four grading or Otis or things like that, so they're trying to continually evolve the conversation around these topics. And then also have them recorded and put up somewhere online so that people can, you know, oh hey, I missed these meetings, I don't know what's going on, okay, we have these resources um, available so that you can watch, you know, uh I think these are all about thirty, forty minutes, so you can watch a couple thirty, forty minute videos, get yourself acquainted a little bit with the process, and then, you know, go in and ask more questions if you want, so uh that's why I made the comment about we had advertised that we were recording this, but uh, just not about the livestream, because we want to record it so we can put it in and have that kind of like series of videos kind of all covering the same thing or similar things, but in different ways so they're accessible.
So, so um are these recall, uh, recordings, are they recordings of like a live event or are they training type videos?
No, this would all be very similar to like what we're doing right now, where I'd set up the room a certain way, they'd run the event, I'd be setting up the table. We'd either be broadcasting it or not, it would be recorded on the computer, I'd put it out there, then we'd just promote that the video is available. Um, so it's.
On YouTube or something?
Yeah, so all these are public forum events that people have been invited to that we usually advertise, the advertisement for this one is gonna go up on social media and everything tomorrow, they've been advertising it in the uh, weekly notes at least since the end of October. I think that this is the thirty-first, um, October thirty-first weekly notes, so.
Great, thank you. And so, they are partially training videos as well in that yeah, there are meetings like this, but there's a presentation, all of them have something very similar, there's a presentation from typically the administration um, and various presenters, and they're talking about different components of either a program or a grading system or you know, the, the whole, the whole system in general. Right, so it's uh it's current it's informative, very informative, so the nice thing about this is you can pause it and go back.
Yeah, me trying to put all the presentations, um, like the PDF presentation's actually attached to the video, so if you're looking at the video, you can also go into the comments. You can get a PDF of the presentation, so if you also want to just kind of look through that, maybe you don't have the thirty, forty minutes to devote to watching a meeting. You can at least look at those, you know, five, uh, I think we've had as many as like twenty, thirty slides, depending on the content area, so.
Well, that's a good option, too. I do know that the administration over here has um, since the beginning of this school year and, and perhaps because of some of these has, have been in conversations with some other schools, asking questions about some of the things that they're doing. Trying to find out more information.
Excellent. Does anybody have any other questions for? Not, if not, let's, thank you, Ruben. And let's move on to the consent agenda. So we've got a, as always, a bunch of items on tonight's consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'd like to request that the stipends be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Um, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? No, it's okay, we're gonna remove that, and then we do need a motion then for the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I, I second the motion. Um but I have a question about it, um. So there's a donation from the Ringe Women's Club to the RMS Health Office, um. And then it is, there's a link to the letter and it's enclosed as a Visa gift card for the funding of your program, what what is the, what do the nurses use it for, how is it being used? I'm just curious.
Right, sure.
Gonna use it for?
Well, that, uh, Nick, do you have information?
Actually, here right now, then she's raised her hand, so I'm assuming that she's happy to answer.
Well, that would be great, sure.
All right, just give me a second, Nick, and it's on. All right, you should be able to talk at this point, Nicky.
Can you, all right, thank you.
Yep, yep, yep.
Um, so our nurses and both of the elementary schools um, provide instruction to students, um, our fourth and fifth graders, mostly our fifth graders, um, on puberty and body changes, um, part of the part of the funds that were donated is that she would like to put um, sort of to-go bags or little kits together, particularly for some of our female learners. Things like um, sanitary napkins, um, other items that as they know, get older and more mature, that they would you know, welcome to have in their backpacks at school. Um, the other thing that we would like to spend the money on um, at RMS is um, changes of clothes, particularly for some of our younger learners. So things like um, extra underwear and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
She said both schools, so did the, JGS get this as well?
Um, I believe this is, I believe this is for Ringe Memorial School. I'm not aware that JGS was getting this, this was from the Ringe Women's Club, right, and specifically for Ringe Memorial School.
All right. We'll have to see then, how we get something similar for the backers. Uh, okay, thank you, are there any other questions relating to the consent agenda? And if not, then all those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, none, so that carries six zero, thank you. All right, so we're on to.
With the statement.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, um. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, so we have the stipend. List to approve. So can we get a motion on approval of the stipend?
I make a motion to approve the stipend list as presented.
Thank you, Jason, the acknowledgement of receipt.
Yeah, just. Point of order, um what we're doing in a consent agenda is we're acknowledging receipt of the stipend report. Those those funds have already been processed. So. There's no approval needed. I mean, you can't stop it, it's done, it's just. It's a report and we're acknowledging it when we receive the report. Yeah, it's not like recusing ourselves because we're allowing someone to.
Okay, that was that was told the one point that I should. My family number is accepting the funds, but that's perfectly fine.
If you were approving payment, absolutely. Let me see.
As always, Charlie, just uh.
Well, no, I didn't.
No, no, I we we really appreciate you paying attention to these things and. And helping us get them right, thank you.
So do I have to second that or is it gone?
Well, we need, we need to.
Approve the, yeah, the acknowledgement of receipt.
Alright, so who's in favor of the acknowledgement? Again, Charlie, thanks. Okay, so we'll move on to the action item. Which is the twenty twenty two twenty three budget development calendar.
I'll make a motion that we accrue the twenty two twenty three budget development calendar as presented.
Great, and we have a second.
A second.
Fifteen, thank you. Okay, um is there any discussion? I will ask a question, it's not, Charlie, do you want to? Give us a little bit of an update on what the calendar tells us and what we should be all prepared for?
Can you tell us what we could all be prepared for, what we're what we're in for, I think is.
Basically, what it says is on Monday, December fifth. We're going to have our school board meeting to review the. Uh budget proposal and along with that, the finance committee recommendations. And then if we don't finish the budget on the fifth. On Saturday, the tenth, we'll finish it off. And there are a whole bunch of things that are required by the RSA which finance has to do. And eventually we get down to the budget bond hearings. Which are on Thursday, January twelfth. At six thirty. And then you want to scroll us down a little bit? Okay, and then um. Where's the deliberative session? I think the next main thing is the deliberative session. On uh February eighth, that'll be in the RMS RMS gym at six thirty. And then finally, the voting will be March fourteenth. At the RMS gym and the proud auditorium. Those are the highlights.
Great, now, how many dozens of hours should each person be prepared to study the budget documents before? The fifth of December.
They should be very familiar with the expenses that they're going to propose to. Our. Legislative body. On March fourteenth.
And and obviously, since we want to move quickly through this. We all do need to do some work before the fifth, is that is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
And and what about, uh, when when do you think we would receive the? Proposed budget? Do we have an expected date or likely date for that?
The. Finance committee is reviewing. On the tenth. RMS JGS SAU and Technology. On the seventeenth, JRMS and CHS. On the twenty first, Facilities and the twenty ninth, Student Services, so my. Uh expectation is that. We go back up to the top. Believe it was the the. So the fifth, the budget development is going to begin. Um which is a discussion with the whole uh. School board. And by that time, I would expect that. Any changes made to the budgets will be sent out as. They're completed, in other words, once we get through with JGS, RMS, SAU and Technology this week. Now, the superintendent will go back, make some changes, and then he'll submit it for the board. That's my expectation.
So so we we could expect to get those pieces. During these next weeks so that we.
The goal, the goal is to give you things in smaller chunks earlier so that you can take a look at them. They may change by the fifth a little bit. But not.
Right.
Not usually.
So so I would just like to throw out the idea that, you know, we oftentimes receive. Important and voluminous information that. You know, we we all want to study or read, but some of it is more critical to our job than others and. And it can take time, right, and we all have busy schedules, but just. Try to keep in mind between now and and twelve oh five, uh that there there will be some documents that if. You spend time with them, it will be. Will be. Doing a good thing for our job as board members, uh yes, Nick?
Yeah, from a notification perspective, Charlie, have you heard of anybody other than Carl Pruder? Who's serving as a budget advisory committee member? Because I haven't heard back from either town in any other capacity. Carl's the only one, so.
Last year, I believe.
Yep.
Roberta used to be there all the time.
I think last year Laurel participated.
I think Laurel participated in Jaffrey. Yep, the moment you approve the budget calendar, um as a board, I am hitting the send button to Laurel. She has requested the budget calendar, so I said, the moment the board. Approves that, I will send that to you. She she is going to be the representative from Jaffrey this year as well, is my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted.
But she will not be attending the finance committee sessions. Yeah, she has been invited.
She has been.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just reached out to the towns and hadn't heard anything, so I just wanted if you guys do anything. Okay.
Okay, great, thank you, Nick. And thank you, Charlie.
And um. Perhaps at one of the board meetings. Before the fifth. Or sometime in that area. We might want to hold a. Very short. Training session for board members and how to read a line item, but.
That would be a great idea.
Okay. There are codes that are used and. Different schools and so forth, so.
It it can look like Greek and it's not that bad if you know what you're looking at.
Would we be able to have a non-meeting perhaps on a couple of different topics? One being JRSSA negotiations as well as this, both of whom would be. Have some financial conversation to them. Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Should we discuss when that might be? Possible, or is that something we should do afterwards?
Maybe a poll.
Look at the calories, okay.
So we'll do a doodle poll or something like that.
Try and find a time to have a non quote unquote non-meeting to discuss.
What would be the goal in terms of a rough timeline? You know, just like I can try to put some.
Honestly, I prefer. The timing is tough. With all those dates, oh. We definitely would want a couple of hours, but.
Because we don't need to post this, correct, because it's a non-meeting.
It's for the person, basically professional development and this type of negotiation type stuff, so.
It's training session?
Training session, yeah.
Although I don't know, because if you have a forum present, it's essentially a board meeting. So I don't know about. It might be open to the public, probably wouldn't hurt to post it. Um the other one, we don't have to, it's negotiations.
Yeah. So. We. Just for a time second, uh Brian. We have a negotiation next Wednesday on the sixteenth. Indeed, after, late afternoon, early evening. So. You know. Meeting prior to that would actually be really helpful. And then, of course, at that point, they would have received some budget information as well that we could actually look at.
So the sixteenth would be one of the days we want to put on that poll.
I think you, I would I would say the fifteenth would be a.
Right, the the Tuesday, in other words, or the Monday. Tuesday, okay. Okay, well, we'll put our heads together and try and come up with a couple of dates so that there is some flexibility and. And Nick will go pull that to us, sorry, thanks. Alright, great, so uh. I believe we have a motion and a second. On this budget development calendar, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, are there any other questions? If there's not, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, so that passes six zero zero. Great. So let's go on to policy approval. We have two policies. JFAB and JFABG. And uh. Do you see what you'd like to? Tell us about?
Sure. This is a policy that we approved a year ago. And I do want to apologize. For continuing to bring policies that we just approved, because we have so many that we have to get done. That haven't been touched in a long time. The reason we're bringing this back is. We had some questions. On usage of outside funds to help support. The tuition that we charge and should we be changing how we charge different constituencies and how we label different constituents and. So we wrote, we spent a very long time really revamping this just from a year ago. And need your guidance, everybody. The main portion at the top that hasn't been touched much really just separates out different. Realms of, yeah, so you really want to read the bold carefully, not K to twelve, non-resident learners. Is different from where it says non-resident learner categories at the top, we need to really specify. Who we're talking about, are we talking about employee children, which is the reason we changed it last year to accommodate them better. Employees out of district being able to have their kids here, we really wanted to change that last year, so we focused there. But now we're focusing on the tuition itself. And are there changes that we really wanted to make? Because of the or in light of the New Hampshire ability to get funding. Um for uh. Not for for schooling now, so there's some funds available. And we just kind of wanted to play with. How do we want to to make sure that we are? Open and providing and welcoming. To people who want to be here. And still being able to support our community financially, being responsible for those funds. So. This will take multiple readings, we really do want to get this right, this took a lot of time to to revamp. Um but if you'll go down, the place where we really want your guidance is the highlight. And there's two areas, there's two sections that have the same highlight. The newhamsherscholarshipfund.org is the site. Where you can go and let's say you're a homeschooler and now you can get funds, I forget the name of it. So what's the name of that fund? Okay, anyways, there's that sixty five forty five hundred dollars, something like that, available. There are school districts in our region who have changed their policies. Where you're not paying, a student out of district doesn't pay the tens of thousands, they pay what? The state will pay. So they need to be there, if they can take advantage of this, then that's what they pay. And that's a very welcoming thought for a lot of parents, where you don't have to spend the sixteen plus thousand. To come to school, you could spend forty five hundred and it's it's supporting through this, so we really wanted to pursue like, is this a direction we want to be? This was not a decision that the policy committee felt we could make isolated. Um so we went to finance committee and the education committee who. Spent months talking about this and looking into great detail about how much it actually costs for people. And what the consequences can be educationally and the culture. By doing this. So that's where we came. To this final document. But we needed some help. The statement, New Hampshire residents are required or encouraged, encouraged slash encouraged to seek state aid to subsidize cost of New Hampshire scholarship. If we start here for the New Hampshire learners placed by a parent or guardian, that is where. A parent um. Through simple, you know, maybe they're moving and or I I there could be a million reasons, but it's simply not a district. Placement, a district's not saying, we can't educate this child, we need to send them elsewhere, that's a different scenario than we're talking. This is if a parent says, boy, I really like what's happening at this school and I want to send my kid there. What's what are their options? Currently, the option is about sixteen thousand seventeen thousand tuition. We are not at this point proposing to change that. But. To encourage them or require them to seek state aid to subsidize costs. Am I saying that correctly? Did we, we didn't say that we were changing that. Costs, we didn't talk about tuition stuff in here.
The tuition will be set by the board and so it'll probably be set by the board on an annual basis, there is a. Cost that has been suggested by the finance committee. Um but we didn't put that number in this.
This is a policy.
Yeah, exactly, not not blocking your, because you'd be updating this policy annually if that's the case.
That cost was less, I believe, just in general, I believe it was less than.
I think we mentioned the number currently right now at eight thousand.
So that's a substantial. That's a substantial plus, yes, essentially decreased from what we currently do charge. We weren't sure if we should, in that case, if we are cutting so substantially. To make ourselves more help, more. More attractive, um should we require that? And to apply for the state aid that would come to us. Should we simply encourage them to do that? It's a lot of money, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's 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 money that we really want to be responsible with. We want to be attractive, we want to be be welcoming, we want to be fiscally responsible. This was a complicated. Complicated thing. The second place where you'll find this highlight. Goes back to district employees. We currently are not requiring district employees to pay the tuition. Depending on the number, up to five learners per year, further requests require our approval, that's what we voted last year. Should we, if the district employee is a New Hampshire resident, should we try to recoup? Should we, if the district employee is a New Hampshire resident, should we try to recoup some of those funds? By requiring or encouraging them to apply for the state. Again, fiscally responsible. I. We don't have the answers, and so we thought, oh, good, we'll come to the school board.
All right, so Lisa, thank you for, I think, doing a very good job presenting the questions. Uh. Do we have any, any guidance on this, it's a. You know, in some ways it's straightforward enough, question, and in some ways pretty complex. So.
This has been.
Charlie, I know that you worked on this quite a bit, or you're, the finance committee discussed it at length over a period of time. And Ruben, obviously, you're right at the center of this, as the budget manager. The district, among other things. No, that's not your official title, but. Do either of you have? Thoughts?
We were asking you guys for thoughts.
I, I don't have a thought, and I wanted, but I do want to get those answers, you know, I do want to. We've all been sitting, we have been, this has been spinning, it's been a washing machine.
So. Perfectly, basically, um. State aid, the voucher. Cause he is not, not everybody's eligible. So if you wanted people to come out of district, or you wanted, uh, our own teachers who are having their students enroll here. They may or may not be eligible, that's the first thing. Second thing is, if they are eligible. Do we leave the choice up to them as to whether or not, uh, they get vouchers? And if they get a voucher, what it does is it, uh, reduces the. Uh, amount of tuition that they have to pay. In other words, um, you can go to a non-resident and you can say, look. All right, there's this voucher system, if you're eligible and you apply for it, and you get it. You can use it with us to offset part of the tuition. So you don't really need to require them to do that, because they're, they have a financial encouragement to that, to do that. On the other hand, if you have teachers who are bringing their children here. And they're eligible for the vouchers program, all right, rather than. If, if we require them to apply, what it would do is it would help reimburse us for the cost that we encounter. Today, for, uh. Allowing their children to attend tuition free. So that's a. Tacky question. And, uh, am I saying it right?
Yeah, I think you got it.
So by that light, if we go up to the parent guardian again, do you mind then? On, um, page three. Um. In that, in that light. If we wrote, New Hampshire residents are encouraged. To seek state aid to subsidize costs and answer this question. Period. But then, if we change the language on the district employees. To required if eligible. To seek state. Why don't you not know if you're eligible, if you haven't, it gets financial, uh, they're over certain income limit?
There's, there's a chart.
So they would look at it and say, yes, I should apply or no, I should not.
Could imagine be some people on the borderline where you need to.
You, I think, yeah, I think you'd even.
Yeah, and a chart can always help. Yeah, those pieces, you know, it doesn't have to be anything that we say, I know what you mean, yeah.
Yeah, so if you go to. That website and you. Hit the first tab. It says parent handbook. Then. It's one of the first pages, like, one of the fourth or fifth page. Talks about three hundred percent of the two thousand, and will change year to year, two thousand twenty-one federal poverty level lines, and it gives, uh. For a family size of two, a family size of three, all the way through eight, and then. If you have more than eight, add thirteen thousand six hundred twenty per. Additional individual, and then says your income limit annually, your income limit monthly, your income weekly. But you can look at that and get a general idea of whether you qualify or not. The legislature has dabbled with language, it hasn't gone anywhere, but with eliminating. That at some point and just saying for everybody. That is not where we are, I mean, it's, it's a, you get, state should probably have a plan. How to pay for that, um, if that's the case, because already they're, um, expending a lot more money than what they had, uh. Planned on, on spending.
So three hundred percent of the federal poverty level, I think, is the same basically for, um, qualifying for a Medicaid.
Mm-hmm.
So I would think that parents would probably have a pretty good sense.
Yeah.
Qualified for that.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a family of five. And you, your family income is ninety-three thousand. You qualify.
Less than ninety-three.
Well, ninety-three thousand one hundred twenty, so I just chose ninety-three thousand or under, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that was worth, that was the big piece that we needed help. Do we have a consensus that that would be an agreeable solution to the language? And if so, then I can rewrite this, send it back to Nick for a second reading next week, and we can still continue the conversation. So I do recommend that you read through. The whole thing, really, like, looks, we did quite a few language changes to help clarify. We would love to know if that actually did, I, I feel like, I mean, it was just money, and so I feel like we're trying to really. Get this right, so if you guys could spend time with it, that'd be great, um. If you are, just a thumbs up, you're good with that language, and we can. I'll go ahead and rewrite that. So for the. Top one to be. Encourage. Encourage the teachers to be required. Fire if. If, 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 I'm knowledgeable, yeah, that works. Thank you, guys.
Um, I, I do have one other.
Yes.
Input on page two. And you have the bullet list. And the last bullet. It says per policy, and then it says attached. I don't think we're. The death policy is attached, and it's second policy.
Uh, so the J F A B D?
Yeah, the S J F A B D.
Yep. Yeah, that's what's in the agenda?
No, 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 that the bullet says it's attached. To this policy.
Yeah, so that was hyperlinked in the policy, it gets hyperlinked, so it isn't like. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that highlight right there. When it's online, is a hyperlink to.
Yeah, so it'll say attached, it'll just be blue on the website, then you can just click.
So, so. The attached inferences of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually anytime we send something to the board for approval, it's more for content than for what it looks like. After you guys approve the language, I take it and I put it in the right format, template, et cetera. Make sure that it's consistent, so that, that's like a minor change, that if I remove the word attached, it's obviously not going to change the intent of the policy. It'll just, it's more of just a visual to show you, um, that that is something.
Right, it'll be a hyperlink. So. I'm just, my personal opinion is, the fewer hyperlinks we use, the better. Because if you make one change to policy, now you have to change every policy that is hyperlinked to. Or hyper, like, of a length to it.
So I typically discourage the use of hyperlinking websites or things like that, because obviously that is the issue of, like. Uh, you know, certain website changes, it's URL, and it's no longer relevant, we had examples of that, where you can click on a website, it's no longer active. But that's also in a way a reflection of making sure that we aren't getting so specific in where we're leading people. The policy, because then you run into that same issue. We even have, like, minor. Examples, it's, like, we might have to look through a bunch of policies and change all references to, uh. Carrie Broderick's old title to her new title. So like, we have business administrator referred to a lot in our policy, but she's now CFO, so it doesn't match. When it comes to linking policies, the benefit of creating this. Online policy manual is we don't have to change the hyperlink. To address the policy, because it's going to hyperlink to a page that live updates. So if we say we approve J F A B. And then I know the J F A B D is also on the agenda, I say we approve that three months later. That hyperlink's still going to bring you to the J F A B. J F A B D page, and then it will just automatically update when I upload the new version. So it won't. If, if the hyperlink doesn't change, the only example in which you would have to change the policy or make a motion, or it would get wonky, or it would break. Is if you guys decided that you no longer wanted that policy, that's the only example in which you try to do an issue, is if you deleted a policy. Anything else that's gonna lag update, uh. See if I can pull it up, just to show you.
Why don't we, uh. I, the. Nick's explanation. Sounded okay, you've.
It sounded okay, I just, yeah. I, to me, I don't see the necessity of a hyperlink, that's all. People can always look for that policy, and the policy will be current based on whatever changes are made to that policy. It's not just, just J, not just this policy, it's any policy.
I think one of the reasons why that particular policy is linked, we're not, even though it's in the agenda, we're not touching that. That is a, um, legal requirement by the state that is set by the state, and that's. I think that might be why it's there, because it is something that we really can't touch, like, that's. That's something that, that is a legal requirement that.
What is?
J F A B D, so I think it has to be linked in there, and, and I think the state has theirs, like, this is not.
And that's, that's what my point is, it does not have to be hyperlinked. You can reference a policy, per policy, learners are to blah, 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 and. If you, they want further explanation, they go to that.
Go back in and go to that policy themselves, is what you're saying.
But that's my personal preference, I don't like hyperlinks, because I'm very leery of. When you change one thing, you end up happening. Something else.
That's what we say, though, is it's live, so.
So.
No matter when they change.
I, I don't, I don't think it's.
It's gonna change.
It's personal preference, so.
All right, well. We'll decide that during the, uh, second and final reading. And, uh. In the meantime, in the interest of time. Do, uh, do. Uh, you already just explained about J F A B D, is there anything else, Lisa, that you need to cover on that? Okay, so these are all, will, these both will be for a second reading next time we meet. So. If we can, why don't we move on to, uh, board committee updates, and. I know, uh. Charlie, you've already given us an update on some of the important elements of the. Finance committee's work, is there anything else you'd need to add or would like to add?
Um. I think we've covered everything, the dates and times, the budget review meeting, we reviewed the school budget calendar. Um, we reviewed stipends in terms of. Uh, what they were and what they were for. Uh, we reviewed the role of mentors. And, uh. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the facilities committee, we covered last time we met, we met on the day of our. Last board meeting, I don't think we have anything additional to add, unless. That's huge, Christine, so. Um. Well, wellness hasn't met since then, right?
No, I don't think they have a meeting started.
Right. Okay. Uh. So then we have education, communication. Goals and, uh. And I suppose policy, even though we've just gone through policies, but, but does anybody have an update for us on their committee?
Our education is meeting on December eighth, we didn't meet. So we're meeting on December eighth. And we're going to be discussing co-teaching programs and the status. Otis preliminary testing data and the first semester behavior, M T S S information.
Wow, so it's a fun one.
Yep.
Get pizza.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
January, we'll look at the M T S S B again.
Okay.
Goals committing that, uh, last week. In the order. The COVID days, um, twenty-seven, um, and. There is, it's a very busy year in addition, and some of the things are moving well, and others have not been moving. Super well, but very understandably. Uh, my, it's. It's nice that it's being, that the shooting plan is being monitored. Not everything is moving in the speed that we hope, except it's also fall, and that's reasonable. Now, so it's, I think, things will move at different speeds. Can't, can't expect everything to all unfold words, thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Lisa, and. Any questions for, uh, for Kim or Lisa? And if not. Thank you both, then. Uh. Let's see. I think, oh, communications. So Nick. Do you want to give us an update on the communications, uh?
Yeah, so we met recently. Um, I can't remember exactly when, but it was within the past couple of weeks. Uh, talked about the website, talked about the, um, mobile app. Um. Didn't have a full board there, I mean, a full committee, we had enough to meet a quorum, but not, I think we were missing three or four people for most of it. I'm out of our nine-person committee, um. Nobody actually showed up, which was unfortunate, so we gotta work on making sure that that. Message is better out there, or just that people are, I guess, more passionate about whatever it is that we're talking about. But that meeting has been recorded, put up on YouTube, so that people can actually view what was said. Um, so if you go to our YouTube page, you can watch that, I think it was about an hour and a half in total. Um, big takeaways is that we. Always have room to improve on the website, but we've made a lot of really good progress. Um. Trying to cut down on some of those little areas where people might be able to say, there's like, a, a lot of people talk about this whole concept of. Some of the times when people are complaining, it might be more of a user error, so maybe having some educational, um, components to talk to people about how to navigate the website. Um, we talked about a couple of specific areas and some changes have already been made regarding the mobile app, it was mostly that, you know, we've, we. Have talked about it a little bit, we pushed it out there a little bit, but the advertisement hasn't been all that great for it, so spending more time to talk to people about that. We put it out on social media, again, to say that we have an app, uh, last week. We, uh, working with all the schools to have it put in the newsletter, we put it. The initial notice out on Thursday. And when I checked this morning, we got twenty-five additional downloads. We had about three hundred downloads over the first year, so obviously twenty-five in a couple of days versus, you know, the three hundred total is pretty good. Um, so we'll continue to push that as a resource for people. Um, there are a lot of other, like, smaller things that we talked about, uh, we wanted to. Still meet quarterly, we found that it's important to me during the school year, not over the summer, and that we would meet once per quarter. Um, throughout the school year, so we're meeting toward the end of the first quarter for that first meeting, so we should have another meeting, um, sooner than later. Um. Am I missing?
Can I just throw in a?
I think so, I think you've got it all.
I, I just want to say that I, I did make it through two-thirds of the recording today. And, uh. Appreciate you doing that, it's, it's interesting how recordings can be wonderful, but it does take some real time, obviously, but. Uh, yeah, the topics you covered were, were good, and in, in particular, I. I was able to download the, uh, app today, I had tried one other time, and I don't know why I don't have it. Must have run into some, something, but when I did look today, I know I had to. Uh, be pretty specific about the name of the app to find it. Uh, you know, I, I started out trying to use S A U forty-seven app, and, you know, that didn't work. But maybe it might be just getting the name out there.
Yeah, so it's just Jaffrey Ridge C S D.
Right.
So, um.
I, I, in fact, I tried J R C S D, but, you know, that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, unfortunately, it's Jaffrey Ridge spelled out and then C S D, so it's, you, you don't want to do the whole thing, but.
Yeah, so maybe you need to get some cars, but anyway, I, I think you're right. It's just promoting that, I think will be. Great, because that works really well.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is just to be able to point people to specific areas and of interest, and just, you know, we can constantly revise that to make sure that if. We're not hitting, I, I, I can access, like, how much people are viewing individual items, so we can actually. Try to refresh that as we go through, so. Try to refresh that as we go through, so.
I love you.
Well, congratulations on having that first meeting, it did sound like you covered a lot.
Yeah, we did talk about the need for a chair, so if anybody is. I don't think there's anybody else that's on the committee on this, but uh we do wanna get somebody to chair that, that's not me, just so that. I'm already, you know, running the livestream, usually doing the presentation, just being able to take some of that like administrative or. Um. I guess, control and flow of the meetings.
So, but just a thought on that, maybe that is some work that can be done. By electronic communication, you know, text or email or something, between now and the next quarterly meeting.
Yeah, I mean, most of it's just looking for a volunteer or just telling somebody they have to do.
Right. Yeah, because in essence, that would give you a collaborator in a sense.
To, to be fair, we joked at the meeting, they. One of the people who. Said they were gonna be there and then didn't show up, we said, oh, I guess you automatically get the chair.
That's traditional, isn't it? Great, okay, well, thank you, Nick, for that. Update and uh. I think that brings us to public comments too.
Yes, so I'll put the policy back up one more time, just make sure everybody's there, I think, maybe somebody else came in that wasn't here before. Um so again, familiarize yourself with policy before making a public comment, if you're online, just use that hand raise feature at the bottom of the screen. Use first name, last name and town of residence before uh making a public comment.
Does anybody have any board matters that we'd like to bring up?
I have a public comment. Um I would like to publicly, uh thank you, John, for running for state legislature. That is a really exceptional thing that you were attempting and whatever the outcome at the polls tomorrow, I just want you to know that. I'm really grateful that you're serving in this capacity and that you're uh fighting to serve not the larger events. You're instrumental to our community, I mean, you're instrumental to this, to this program that you have, it's in. Into the school district.
Uh I'm not sure that's an appropriate comment, so.
Hey, I'm not a Jaffrey resident, I think it's really cool that you know that and. Just think it's really neat that you're running, so whatever the outcome, thank you for, thank you for serving and.
Right, right.
Ready to serve that capacity.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment, and like you said, whatever, whichever way it goes, it's, you know. It's democracy, so that's what we want, right, okay. Any, any other board matters? What about uh future items? What about uh a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn in a second.
Alright, hold on a favor, I.
I.
Very good.
Great, have a good day to everybody.